Okay, if so, I will call to order the Ferguson Township regular meeting for Tuesday, April 1st, 2025 to order. Please rise as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. We will now recognize the Assistant Manager to please give us the meeting procedures and the call to roll.
Thank you Chairman, and thank you to the members of the board, staff, and public for joining us this evening for the April 1st regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a hybrid meeting with the option to attend virtually and in person here in the main meeting room. If you are in attendance virtually using the WebEx platform and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please say your name, municipality of residence, and the topic you wish to speak on when the chairperson calls on you. If you are attending in person with us in the main meeting room and wish to speak on behalf of an agenda item, please address the board at the podium and state your name, municipality of residence, and topic you wish to speak on. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short procedural items to cover. First, members of the public attending using the WebEx platform are asked to remain muted during the meeting to prevent any ambient noise from disrupting the meeting. If a member of the public is acknowledged by the Chair, they may unmute their microphone for their question or comment. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when motioning or seconding a motion so that the minutes may accurately reflect the action taken. Finally, a roll call of the Board of Supervisors will now be taken to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the WebEx meeting platform. Please indicate that you are here when your name is called. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Patterson?
Here.
Mr. Heller?
Here.
Chair, you have quorum.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there any members of the board that wish to modify tonight's agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
The agenda item for Old Deetsburg Road, we need to pull that.
I think it's Gateway.
Sorry, Gateway Drive, thank you.
Okay, item 7-2.
Yep.
All right, do we have a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Item 7-2 has been pulled from the agenda. Next up, public comment. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the board with an item not on the agenda should ask to be recognized at this time. We kindly ask each person to keep their remarks for five minutes when speaking. We'll alternate between persons in the room and online. When speaking, please remember to state your full name and neighborhood of residence. And we will start with Mr. Killian.
Hello, my name is Elliot Killian. I reside in Ferguson Township on Harris Street. I'm back, back again. Elliot's back. Tell a friend. Back with a new report. I just published it about a couple hours ago, or right before I got here. The new report is the Nittany Gateway District. This is for North Atherton, the section right outside State College Borough on North Atherton. In the report, I'm proposing five floors allowing residential use. Currently, this zone is general commercial. So I would imagine you'll at some point review this plan. The idea is to increase building heights so that residential use could be allowed in the district. So that's something to review. I urge you to take action. This is not my first time coming in front of the Board of Supervisors. The action you can take is very simple. Just send these different reports to the Planning Commission. I've written many reports, several reports, just for you, just for Ferguson Township. This includes our four improvements, ADUs, and Nittany Gateway District. I believe that these reports in value would be tens of thousands of dollars if you were to go to a consultant, and I'm doing them for free on my own time. Pat Township has already discussed and sent the R4 Improvement Plan that I created for them to their Planning Commission. So it sounds like Planning Commission, sorry, it sounds like Pat Township has marched an adaptive zoning than Ferguson. Is Pat Township a better township than Ferguson Township? Generationally, I'm a millennial. The lucky ones of the millennials, which I'm not included in this lucky ones, I am lucky, but not in this way, who had a great job, married young and stayed together, or inherited money from family, were able to buy a house. So the lucky ones of the millennials were able to buy a house. Gen Z, the next generation who are younger than me, they have an anger and despair. They believe that they will never own a house. They believe they will never own a house. I want you to imagine that. Imagine 20 years old, believing you will never own a house. I highlight this because I believe sometimes if you're not younger, it's outside of your perspective. And the need for housing is a dire need. It is a critical need, and that's why I'm so passionate about this. This is why I'm coming to you. Talking about affordable housing, I've talked to lots of different people, and I'll tell you just three examples of the people I've talked to. I've talked to a single mother who was days away, a day away from being evicted because she couldn't afford $1,000 a month for a one-bedroom, and she had a newborn. I've talked to people who, they work in the center region, and they have to drive two hours away to afford a place to live. There's nowhere in Center County they can live, and nowhere in Center Region they can live. And yet, we rely on them to work in the Center Region. We rely on their services. There are buildings in downtown State College and State College Borough where it is $1,400 a month for a two-bedroom apartment, and you have to pay $1,400 for four people to live in a two-bedroom. So you don't get your own room, and you have to pay $1,400 a month. I want you to imagine what it was like for you as a 20-year-old if you had to pay that amount, and that was not for a house, that was not for a mortgage, that was a rental. Those are just some of the stories. I believe that we're at the end of this real estate cycle, and so effectively, the quickest to implement would be ADUs. But the other reports and proposals I've sent to you, the R4 Improvements and Nittany Gateway District, if you were to act now, if you were to implement them immediately, realistically, I believe it'll take 10 years before they were to be built. So that's really what we're talking about. We're not talking about things that'd be implemented tomorrow, even though there's critical need for them. But I believe it'll take 10 years for these projects to be implemented. That's all I had for tonight. I ask that you review the new proposal I created for the Nittany Gateway District. I ask that you send these reports for Planning Commission to review. Thank you so much for serving in local government. I appreciate your work, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Elliot. Anyone online? Seeing none. Anyone else in the room? Seeing none. That will move us to the approval of the minutes from the March 18th, 2025 meeting. Pending no amendments, I will entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
This is Patty, so moved.
And do we have a second?
This is Matt, second.
Motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Mr. Heller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 5-1, we have introductions and information on interim emergency receivership appointment. Joe Woodward, Senior Director of Operations for Pennsylvania American Water Company is here to speak to the board this evening.
Good evening. First of all, I want to introduce myself. It's Joseph Woodward, Pennsylvania American Water Company, and I want to thank the board for the opportunity to come in front of you tonight and explain what happened recently with the Rock Spring Water Company, and what we're doing here over the next probably two, three months, the immediate things that we're going to be doing here. So on March 21st, the Public Utility Commission dropped a order putting Pennsylvania American Water as the emergency receiver to the Rock Spring Water Company. And what that means is, we have a list of items that we are responsible for over the course of the next 90 days and possibly longer. But I just want to read the first one that I think is the most important thing, and that's to operate the system in compliance to all state, federal, and local laws and regulations, including the Pennsylvania Safe Drinking Water Act. So I'm here this evening to assure everyone that as long as Pennsylvania American Water is here, the water will be safe to drink. Not to say it wasn't before. On the day I can speak from the 21st of March to the time we are not here any longer, we will guarantee that we will do everything to make sure the water, that the customers, the Rock Spring Water Company is drinking is safe and meets all regulations. So I think that's very important to ensure the safety of the water to the public. And we, when that order came down, was around noon on that Friday of the 21st. We had people here that Friday that took over, taking over all the samples. So I will tell you from that Friday, the 21st on, personnel from Pennsylvania American Water have been here every day. We do all the sampling. We control the well. We are doing all the regulatory required sampling out of the distribution system. That has all been relieved from the Rock Springs Water Company personnel that were doing it, and Pennsylvania American Water is now doing that. So we, some other things that we did right from the very beginning, that Monday, if anyone drove by the well site, if they're familiar with it, we probably had 10 different trucks there and different personnel there. But we got in there, we met with the VEP, a sanitarian, day one, went over things that he'd like to see fixed. We actually fixed a leak that was in the raw water line from the well to the chlorine contact tank that's at the well itself. There was a leak there, we fixed that day one. We changed the chlorine injection point to where it actually should have been, where the permit requires it to be, as opposed to where it was at before. We installed a new SCADA system on day one. We came in, put a cellular-based SCADA system. The SCADA system is the supervisory control and data acquisition. It's basically what a water utility, a wastewater utility, uses to monitor the remote sites across their different systems. So we put a new system in to do that, and we also took over control of the existing Rock Springs SCADA system and locked down any access that anyone had to only Pennsylvania American Water personnel. We also, on day one, we installed the chlorine analyzer right at the well. It's very important that the right amount of disinfectant be injected into the water to make sure the water is safe. There really was no means of measuring that other than going and doing grab samples in the distribution system. So we now have a chlorine analyzer that's 24/7 monitoring with low-low alarms and high-high alarms, so that if chlorine goes too high, that could be bad. If the chlorine goes too low, that's also not acceptable. It will actually shut the well down when it hits the low alarm. So that was done day one. We put new hasp and locks on the doors that we are only ones that have access to the well itself. And so we really, the first week last week, we really spent a lot of time ensuring that the water's safe, that we have procedures in place that make sure the correct monitoring is being done. And we have personnel that come either from our Philsburg operation or Milton operation on a daily basis to do all the required well checks and sampling. Some of the things now we're working on are more of control, like the financial aspects of the water company. We're not as far along with that. We're still working through those aspects of the receivership. But we also are trying to inform the public what's going on. So I've been in contact. We sent Treese here over last week, and she was very kind to offer up, to allow us to put a blurb in your upcoming Township newsletter, which we provided today. We're also going to do a direct mailing. We're still working through trying to get the customer list from Rock Spring, but once we do that, we'll also do a direct mailing. And we plan to do a press release as well. But I will tell you, one of the things that we have done, it's ready now, is we are going to, we have a website set up, and it will be in that blurb that we provided to sent Treese, but it's basically pennsylvaniaamwater.com backslash rock spring. What we're going to do there is we're going to post, sorry, we're going to post updates of all the activities that we've done as we're here. And then the other thing is, the existing Rock Spring customer service number will still be the number that'll be used if any residents or customers have a issue, pressure, or something wrong with their, you know, their water, and anyone will call a customer complaining, they still use the same number. But we also now, we created an email that customers can also email, and those emails go directly to Pennsylvania American Water. So that email is rock.spring.customer@amwater.com. And I can, again, we, this is all in the blurb that we provided to sent Treese today, if somebody wants, you know, written down what they are. So we think it's very important that we try to get the word out to customers, you know, if they need to contact us, that's the way of doing it. The receivership itself, there's language in there, and I know you're probably aware of this, State College Borough Authority has been in the process of trying to acquire the Rock Spring Water Company. Those discussions are still going on. There's basically, in this receivership, there's a 90-day window for them to come to an agreement with Rock Springs. This receivership is independent of that. We are here strictly to help in the interim period of time, and we are hoping that State College Borough Authority comes to an agreement with Rock Springs sooner rather than later, quite honestly. So we would like to see that happen. We are aware that State College Borough Authority has provided a sales agreement to Rock Springs owner, and now it's incumbent upon the owner and his shareholders to act upon that agreement. But in the meantime, Pennsylvania American Water Company will be, again, in here operating the Rock Spring Water Company until such time as we're told we're no longer needed anymore. So again, I appreciate very much so the time to speak to the board. I know there's been a lot of questions over the years related to the water company here, the Rock Springs Water Company, and I just want to, like I said, I want to put a face to our company. I am actually going to be the operator of record for the system. So all the certifications and all the operators that are required for the system now are the previous records that have been taken down, or licensed operators, and now it's Pennsylvania American Water operators that are in charge of the system. And so with that, I will open up for any questions.
Yes, Mr. Patterson?
I have lots of questions, and I'll try to keep them to just a few. I think the core thing, you said the water is safe, maybe safer. Can you quantify that? Do you have any of that data to quantify exactly what it means when you say, you know, safe?
Sure. That's a good question. So the, and I don't know if everyone is aware of this even, your water, if you're a Rock Springs Water Company customer, there is one well. Your water comes from one well. There's no treatment plant. There's no elaborate. I know some other, like, bigger areas or cities or water systems have maybe treatment plants, surface water treatment plants that have filter plants that take water and filter it from like creeks or rivers and reservoirs, stuff like that. And we also have many, many well systems. So it's not unusual to have a water system being, a source being a well. But it's one well. There's chlorine injected into the water for disinfection purposes. The water is then held for a period of time, detention time, to allow the chlorine to react with anything in the water to kill it. And then that water then is pumped out into the distribution system, and there's one tank at the top of the Penn State Ag Days complex over there. If you go through the Penn State Ag Days property and keep going, and then there's a dirt road that goes up, there's a tank where water is pumped to, which creates the pressure in case there's a large usage or something like that, that tank provides the additional storage that's required for that. But I will tell you, we, again, we have to put that chlorine analyzer in there that is constantly monitoring the chlorine 24/7 now. That wasn't there before. We did increase the amount of chlorine that's being fed at the system. So from the 21st on, customers may have noticed a little bit more of a chlorine smell in their water. And I want to ensure people that is, you know, it's from a, it might not be appealing from a, you know, a taste and odor perspective, but we are confident it's the right amount of chlorine that's in the water to make it safe. We have, we have to do a weekly bacteriological test out of the distribution system. Again, we did the last one, and when I came back positive, or negative, I should say, it was a good sample. And we've also been monitoring chlorine residuals throughout the distribution system. So we know the amount of chlorine we're feeding at the well is traveling throughout the distribution system. We're not losing too much of that. Chlorine's not dropping. It's holding its own now. So we're confident from the testing we've been doing to this point that we feel the water is safe. There are other, you might have heard of PFOS, forever chemicals. There was a test that, we're required to do that now quarterly. There was not a first quarter test taken until we got here, so we took that test. I have not seen the results back from that. But those regulations, there's some Pennsylvania regulations are in place right now, but there's much stricter federal regulations that are coming in, in 28, 29 timeframe for PFOS. But, so we have taken all the regulatory samples that are required to this point, and the best of our ability with all the samples we've seen, we feel that the water is safe to drink.
I'm a numbers person. So when you say increase in chlorine, is that like a 10%, 20%, 30% increase? Any idea?
I don't want to speculate. So I will tell you, you know, there's residual chlorines that you measure, and say, maybe it was in the neighborhood of anywhere from, you know, .6 to .8 free chlorine, residual chlorine, and now we're up above, like, we're probably in a 1 and 1/2 area. So I would say, you know, I don't want to say quite double, but it's
It's increased, sure.
From .8 up to maybe up 1 and 1/2.
Okay. And in that increase, is there some sort of like PPMs that you noticed of some particles that aren't good that necessitated that increase?
No, we just felt more comfortable at the levels from our own experience than other systems where we like to see the chlorine residuals at, to make sure that, because there's an obligation in Pennsylvania, at the furthest points of your water distribution system, you have to have a minimum amount of chlorine in the water. It's .2 is the minimum chlorine. So at every part of your distribution system. So if, you know, if you're only putting so much in the beginning, you're not going to be able to maintain all that in the end. And I'm not saying you weren't. I'm just saying, we're comfortable at the level since we've been operating a system, we're comfortable that we're meeting all the, all the regulations.
So in those latter ones that you're saying you're monitoring now, are you seeing .2 or something higher?
No, we're seeing, we're seeing higher. I mean, we're seeing higher residual levels.
Okay.
We don't want to be right on the edge either, so we are seeing some higher levels.
Copy that. And then you mentioned on the financial side, not as far along, and that's just more of a transition thing? I'm sure there's some things you can't share, but any insight there?
Yeah, and I will tell you, like I said, we've really not dug into the finances. We are, as part of the receivership, we will be controlling bank accounts and controlling the finances, but that part of it has a little bit more of a transition, you know, because there is some things that have to be, that have to take place yet. So we're not really as far along. We have some meetings set up next week, and we've been in contact with the Rock Springs attorney, and we're still working with the Rock Springs owner and employees that, you know, we still are working with them, because we're kind of managing the system now. So, so some of the emergency type stuff, you know, we're still using their knowledge of the system. Like, we, you know, we're not the experts on all the lines and stuff like our at right now. And so, but we are, yeah, we have, we have a meeting set up next week that should get us a little bit further with the financial part of this whole equation.
Copy that. You mentioned you kind of changed some lines around. There's a new SCADA thing in there.
SCADA, yeah.
In there. Is that funded from the financial Is that funded from the financials that you're not sure quite far along yet on?
Yeah. So, it is, I mean, what, we're supposed to step into the shoes of Rock Springs, and we will be financing, any things we do should be financed out of the Rock Springs funds. But, I say that, there's an obligation. We, as a company, we are governed by the Public Utility Commission. We were ordered, we got to do what we have to do. So, I will tell you, financing, or if there's something we need to do to make the water safe, we're going to do it, regardless if the funding's there or not. So, with that being said, we, again, we are not projected to be the ultimate owner. Doesn't mean we won't be. If State College and Rock Springs ownership doesn't come to an agreement, there may be a place that we might have to play ultimately in ownership, but we are, we are on the record, and even at the Public Utility Commission, we like to see State College Borough Authority as be the ultimate owner of this system. But, to, I mean, I think, to answer your question, you, I will assure you that everything that has to be done to make sure the system is safe and continues to keep running in this interim period of time, Pennsylvania American Water will do.
Okay, thank you. And then, you mentioned that there was a leak. Do you know how much was leaking at that point?
Yeah, I want to say, I don't know, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was, and reasonably, it was, oh, maybe, yeah, I don't want to speculate. There was definitely, we could see it from what the well was pumping versus what the system was pumping out. And, like I said, we, it was in a pit, actually, where the chlorine injection should have been at, and it just wasn't, they weren't using that. So, we pumped that down, saw, found a leak. It was basically a brass nipple that was threaded into the main where the chlorine injection goes in there. We replaced that, and we started using the correct injection location for the chlorine injection feed. Yeah.
Okay. And then
It was probably, if I was estimate, it was probably, it was, you know, a decent leak. The threads were all basically rotted away, and so it was shooting out the side, maybe, I don't know, maybe like 10 gallons a minute, maybe, or something like that. Yeah. So, and again, I'm speculating. So, I don't, we didn't really, you know, measure it at this point, but, and, oh, I wonder, speaking of a leak, we did, prior to the receivership, we, we were asked to come over and help them find the leak, and we had a leak detection person from Philsburg come over, and helped the owner, he found it, pinpointed it, and then Rock Spring got it fixed. That leak, they were told us that leak reduced the amount of water pumping into the system by 40,000 gallons a day. So, they were pumping anywhere from like 160,000 to 190,000 gallons of water a day. That leak reduced between 100 and 120,000 gallons a day. So, it was about 40,000 gallons a day leak that we fixed. Now, we had leak detection people here today. I'm actually going to meet with them after this meeting here, and I think they found another leak today that the owner put us in the general vicinity of, and our people are able to pinpoint the leak. So, we have a lot of sophisticated equipment that helps find leaks and, you know, that maybe just didn't have those resources before, but I know that was a big thing with the Department of Environmental Protection. There was a lot of unaccounted-for water, amount of water you pump versus the water you bill. There was a lot of water unaccounted for in between. So, we are, you know, because we, that one leak they found and fixed was 40,000 gallons, and hope this other one here they found today is substantial, helps that amount of water being pumped and lost come down a lot.
And you touched on it a little bit, so I would assume that there were some local jobs that were with the existing system. Those are all still there. You've just kind of changed over some doors and locks, but folks are still in place?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
Right, the folks that were, and there wasn't many, but that is still continuing.
Great, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to clarify again. So, you had said that the customer service telephone number is still being operated by Rock Spring Water Company?
It is.
Okay, so if customers have issues, they will get in touch with them, and you're working with them to resolve any issues?
Yes, the, the, the Rock Springs, anything they do, they have to communicate that with us, and even now, other parts they ask me. So, any kind of customer service issues, any main breaks that come in, if they would come through that number, they have to let us know what's going on. All the alarms and stuff like that, that used to come into them before for, like, issues with the system or the wells, stuff like that, that is all coming directly to Pennsylvania American Water now. But as far as a customer having a low-pressure complaint or anything like that, it will, they can either call the phone number yet, or they can email us, and the email goes directly to Pennsylvania American Water. So, with us not knowing how long we're going to be here, we didn't know if we should set up a new phone number, because again, them and State College might come to an agreement next week. We don't know that. It's undecided at this point, so, but the customers will have an option of, well, it's available now, to email Pennsylvania American Water directly if they have a customer issue.
Okay. And fire hydrants out there, is that part of the state and federal regulations that you're monitoring, water to fire hydrants?
Yeah, so, I mean, we are aware that the fire hydrants aren't really, let me rephrase that. We are aware that some of the fire hydrants really aren't, the amount of water available for those fire hydrants isn't great, but that's something that will not really be addressed in this interim period. You're talking about, it's not a matter of, like, maintaining or coming in and just replacing a fire hydrant. It's the size of the water main in the ground that feed that fire hydrant, and it really controls the volume and the pressures that are available to that fire hydrant. So, honestly, we, we probably, this interim, well, I know we went, this interim period, there will not be improvement in the available fire flows from the fire hydrants.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heller. Joseph, I just want to say thank you. To you, the company, to the staff that have come on-site to resolve the issues, I appreciate it. Thinking about residents out there, they want to go up to the faucet, turn it on, and have water that will not make them sick, water that is drinkable, water that they can use for whatever they see. So, I appreciate knowing that you and your teams are on-site to ensure that for everybody out there. Everything with SCBWA, receivership, et cetera, that'll come out in the wash. Things will be figured out over time, but to resolve the issue as quickly and as professionally as you did, and the company truly thank you.
Thank you.
My only comments.
Lisa.
Thanks for coming and sharing this information. It's really helpful. So, at the end of the 90-day period, hopefully we'll hear that there's been some agreement reached, or could there be a continuation of this receivership at that point?
Yeah, and I, the receivership, I believe is for six months, actually.
Oh, okay.
But there's a, there's a term, there's a language in the receivership that in the first 90 days, there's an opportunity for State College and Rock Springs to come to an agreement. So, if, if they don't, we will still be involved after that 90 days to continue the receivership. I think it's up to six months. And again, there's no saying that that will not be extended, depending on the circumstances. But, we want to get through this first 90 days first, and then we'll, we'll take it from there.
And then, Patty clarified. I think all the questions I had were answered, so thanks everybody for all of those. The phone number is still the same. Is there anything else customers need to know as far as any billing issues, or any, will anything change for them in this short period of time?
Yeah, nothing will change. So, prior to us taking over, I think they did their quarterly billing at the end of February, and I think the bills were due that quarter. So, the next round of bills won't be coming out here until May timeframe, I guess, and they will still look the same. The Rock Springs folks will still be doing the billing under our direction, and where you mail or drop off your customer payments will still be the same as well. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. Great to hear you work with the manager on communications. I think that will definitely go a long way, especially out in the West End. We understand Rock Springs customers get information in various methods and ways, whether that be by mail or online, or even by television, newspaper, you know, so definitely appreciate that.
Thank you so much for the time. And Centris, we've been great to work with. I really appreciate her input and suggestions for us, and I'm sorry to hijack your meeting tonight, so I apologize for the people coming after me, so, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item 5.2, our diversity, equity, and inclusionary activities and acknowledgements. In the month of May, we are celebrating Arab American Heritage Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month, Autism Awareness Month, World, then on, tomorrow is World Autism Awareness Day. International Dark Sky Week will be the week of the 21st. Good Friday will be on the 18th. Easter will be on 20th. Earth Day will be on the 22nd. Arbor Day will be on the 25th, and then there will be a Ferguson Township Arbor Day event on April 26th. Next, Authorities, Boards, and Commissions Reports. We have the Center Area Transportation Authority Report presented by Mr. Rob DiMeo. I believe he is joining us online, and he has the floor. Rob, it appears you may be muted.
Yeah, it looks like we might be having some technical difficulties. What we can do is move on to our COG and committee reports and circle back around to Rob. So, item 5.4A, Parks and Recreation Governance Committee was canceled. Item 5.4B, we have the Facilities Committee.
That would be me. Mr. Progar, if you can shoot a ping in the chat. I don't know if you want to do that. Thank you. All right, so from a Facilities Committee meeting this morning, four main items. The facilities manager continues to really show that they made the right choice. There's a kind of multi-phased, here's where we are with everything and what we're doing next. In the Phase 1, they, we kind of reviewed essential services like the buildings, roof HVAC, fire alarms, and also fire safety. And so, gave kind of a high-level, you know, fair, poor, good, bad type of, type of a report. And HVAC and roofs seem to be the things that are going to come up in our CIP. I think they were there last year. We pushed them off, but they continue to come up as things that absolutely need to be replaced from a COG perspective. After that, he, the facilities manager is now going to start using the Tracer system, which we use here. So, it'll be kind of a COG thing, and so Codes is already using Tracer. Ferguson Township uses Tracer, so he gave kind of a quick demo and actually showed some of the Ferguson Township stuff that we have there, because it's an integrated system, which I absolutely love, that we have this kind of regional view. And then, he gave an update on a couple of projects that were in the works, one being there's a Millbrook Marsh Bridge improvement. I think it's about an $80,000 ticket. They finished the design on that. They've done a little bit on it, and so they're on track there. And then, there was one more I just didn't write down. A couple other projects, small dollar projects, I think it was $3,000, and it wasn't in the CIP, but was like a critical thing that they replaced, was the water softener, actually. He saw some buildup around some of the faucets, and said, "Oh, my gosh, hey, what's going on?" And the softener wasn't working for who knows how long before he got there. So, that was serviced and replaced, I think replaced because it wasn't working. So, really positive movement from a facilities perspective. And that's all I have from a Facilities Committee.
So, were most of these about the HVAC on the roof and the water softener? This was in the COG building there on, is that Gateway Drive?
And, and the fire stations.
And the fire stations.
Yes, yes. The list on that Phase 1 was those main services across all the buildings that COG controls. It just so happens that those two examples were in the COG building.
Okay. And then, also gearing up for pool season, is, does that fall under his, did that fall under his review?
Yes, because I think the, I guess it would be Christie, but there's a fine line there, like the replacement of the pipes underneath the thing. I suspect it, can anybody help me there? I don't call. I think it was under parks. I think all that stuff's under parks, but I, he may have a hand in it going forward.
Okay.
Mr. Heller.
I'm curious, was he surprised to learn how hard the water is here in State College to have eaten through a water softener whenever else caused the issues? No, I, I think it's, again, it's good that we have a heads up, and I appreciate that. HVAC, roof, things that it sounds like, knowing your purview and your nature of looking for the details and the numbers, knowing that that's on your radar, I think helps us then for future conversations. If we have to do something, we have to do something. So, I appreciate the heads up in that respect. Thank you.
Fun fact, I've been going to a soccer facility for my son for a couple of years now, and I've driven down the same street for a couple of years now, a few times a year, and I passed the sign of Dormont, which is where the COG Executive Director came from. I passed it several times, didn't notice it until yesterday.
Any other questions?
If no, we can go back to Mr. DiMeo with the CATA report. It looks like they may have tried a different device. Otherwise, the report is attached to the agenda, and if we still can't get Rob DiMeo, we can move on to the agenda. There's actually only really one more major item on here, so should be a quick meeting tonight.
You just cheesed us.
You know, I was going to make an April Fool's joke about making this a long meeting, but I, I don't even want to entertain that thought right now.
So, Chair, Mr. DiMeo is with us. He's just having a laptop technical issue, and he can hear us. So, if there are any questions, I'm happy to get responses and bring them back to the board. But if there aren't any responses, that's fine as well. His report is, is provided with the agenda, as you mentioned.
I just wanted to say thank you, and congratulations on your being appointed to the next, whatever it was in there in your report. So, that's great. I'm really excited about that. So, thank you and congratulations.
Any other questions on the CATA report?
He shares, "Thank you all for your trust in me."
Thank you.
All right, item 6, no unfinished business. Item 7, we have new business. There is a change order, and if no one has anything to say about the change order, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Patty. Still moved?
Do we have a second?
This is Lisa. I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Stevens, second by Ms. Strickland. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Item 7.3, we have the discussion and approval of a final land development plan for Rudder Store 110, located at 948 Blue Course Drive, and this will be in the general commercial zoning district and the corridor overlay district. And this has conditions. We will recognize the planning and zoning director. Just share more.
Thank you, Chair and Board. This one's exciting. Final land development plan for Rudder Store 110, stated February 7, 2025. It includes 13,470 square feet of convenience store area, eight fuel dispensaries, associated infrastructure. It's zoned C for commercial, and it's in the corridor overlay district. It's approximately 6.313 acres, and the automobile service stations are permitted use in that district. Preliminary plan was approved by the Board of Supervisors, June 4, 2024. The Planning Commission at the regular meeting on March 24, 2025, voted unanimously for conditional approval. The conditions are, they're provided in your packet, along with the Planning Commission packet for the additional details, but the condition number one is for sure T-bomb. bond that is essentially related to right-of-way improvements. That includes two traffic signals. One's the reconstruction traffic signal along Blue Course. One is the traffic signal along the, for the new access. And there's a right turn lane along Blue Course, site distance improvements along Blue Course, and they're closing the access to the golf course across the street. Also on Blue Course, the bike lane will continue through. A second condition is related to administrative items as listed, including the plan format, the notification sign return and payment of fees. And three is related to Storage Tank and Spill Prevention Act, providing proof of compliance with that. And as the applicant has indicated, that is something that's, can be done after the storage tanks are installed. There will be a place on the plan to include a note. And four is the deed for right-of-way dedication. And five, statement related to the installation of improvements on the plan. So they all kind of tie back together. Almost all of these conditions are just your normal, are pretty straightforward and administrative. And six is related to two recordings, one for the sidewalk easement and another for the traffic signal easement to simply include book page number and those get written in. Additionally, stormwater has been approved and recorded previously and landscaping, lighting, parking requirements are all met. The applicants are present. We have the engineer and also a representative from Rutters. Thank you.
Any questions on the plan? Mr. Heller.
If I recall, early on, there were conversations about improving the intersection, that there was going to be additional work that was done to the intersection, maybe for line of sight issues. I know this is further down the road, but I was curious if we could just maybe recap what those improvements were going to be.
So I'll tell you my understanding and then invite the applicant if you just do this if I missed something. Along Blue Course, there'll be a right turn lane installed and there'll be a side signal where there's an access road, not the, sorry, the PowerPoint, not the college side, but the, where there's the, the access drive along Blue Course. And then, so when you come around along College, there will be the ability to do a left, a left turn in and a right turn out. And then I believe there's, there's an old, may have been a right-of-way at one point, been an old access on the, essentially behind where the neighboring property, I believe it's Blaze right there. And there'll be some driveway access points from there as well. And if that may or may not answer your question, I have some backup here.
Yes. Tony Fruttl, Pantera Engineering, of course, we're the engineer for the, for the project. And everything Kim said is, is what's happening there. There's a right turn lane on Blue Course Drive that will be in front of the project. It also doubles as sort of a D cell lane because there will be a right in to the project at that point. It also is an additional right turn lane onto College Avenue. There will be a right D cell lane on College Avenue into the access that essentially is what was formerly known as Old Block Road. That, the, the, that point between Alexander Stucky, or Alexander and Rutters. There was some issues with whether that was a right-of-way, a future right-of-way and easement. That's all been taken care of now. It's a driveway. It's a shared access agreement. Those are all recorded. But I believe what you're talking about is the fact that on Blue Course Drive, actually on the other side of the intersection, next to the Waffle Shop.
Yes.
There will be a profile change.
Thank you.
Because when you are sitting on Blue Course waiting to turn left towards town, it's difficult to see traffic coming up over that hill there. And Pendott was very adamant about making that change so that when traffic needs to have a permitted turn, they can see traffic coming up the hill from the Waffle Shop.
That was precisely it. I appreciate it. So it's a safety improvement for those and that, that's a big, you know, big red ribbon on all of this. So not only Rutter's coming in, but also having that improvement. Truly, I just want to say thank you.
My understanding is there was a couple accidents there related to that exact thing and it's being taken care of. So, yeah.
Much appreciated. Thank you. My only question.
Yes, I'll just ask, is that construction on that improvement going to be occurring at the same time as this development? Or is this something, okay, okay.
It's part of the same plan, the same phase.
Yes, it's part of the same plan set. And it has been reviewed, it's approved. Surety's posted, the, the permit has been issued by Pendott for that work.
My only, great, thank you. My only two other questions were the closure of the access to the golf course on the opposite side. Maybe we went over this before, but I couldn't recall why that was being.
I believe that was a request of, of the Township Engineering Department. And I believe the thought was that that was actually a safety hazard with people just kind of miscellaneously pulling in there and pulling out. The other part of that is that intersection is now signalized. And so you can't signalize that, that wouldn't be signalized. It's not a road. So people would, it, it would create a, that would create a, a safety issue. I know there were people disappointed that they can't park there to get on the bike path anymore. But it will be, the travel lane on Blue Course will go the whole way through. The bike path will go the whole way through. The connection to the path on Penn State properties will be made. So that's, that's why it's going away.
Just your question about that. No, yeah, that, that is a shame. So, but understood. And then I did get a communication asking about EV charging. And I know that was addressed at the Planning Commission. If you could just address future potential and, you know, I understand it was not included in this plan. So if you could just speak to that.
Rutter's basically contracts that out. If somebody's interested in bringing that in, they bring it in. We're actually working with the power company about relocating some of those poles on Old Block Road. And there will be a setup there so that if they come in, they'll be set up to do it. But it doesn't, it doesn't run through Rutter's. They don't want it to go into the building, run through their electrical system and then come back out because they, they don't run it. It's essentially leased out.
Currently, we don't. Tim Beaver with Rutter's. Currently, we don't operate any EV charging. I would imagine there is going to be a time when we are back in the game. We were, we probably started about 10 years ago. As Tony had mentioned, we were kind of a lease operator. We provided the facility and they, they came in and put the chargers in. The company went bankrupt and we did not pick up another service provider to do that. Whether it becomes a lease or whether we do it again, I believe it's just, it, it's something that's going to happen. I just don't know the timing.
All right, thank you.
So the infrastructure will be there to do it?
So, so, and yes and no. I, I strongly believe that the best way to go about this is not to provide the electrical service through the building itself. We're already a pretty high user, we're 1,200 amp service. When you get and you start to add that, and then the other problem is depending on the length that you're running from your electrical room to the, to the charging stations, it becomes pretty cost prohibitive to do it that way. What I would expect, and I think you see this in a lot of places, there is a separate service strictly for the EV charger. So it comes, you, you make it more localized to, to the area where you're providing the charging at.
And that is set up. That will be set up.
The infrastructure. We, we won't.
Infrastructure, yeah.
We will be able to make a service connection from the, the power company to be able to provide that charging. Similar to, like it sheets on the, the end of Atherton there. It's kind of separate. It, it, it's almost like a standalone. I would imagine that's what we will do. That seems to be the most feasible way to go about it.
The ability to kind of make a connection to, it's not coming from the building off a homerun or anything like that. It's going to be its own separate thing.
It would be its own ser, electrical service.
The ability for it is there.
Yes.
But you're, there's no infrastructure that you're doing as part of this plan.
Right. Because until you know exactly what it is that you're going to do, as long as you know that you have the capability to do it, then when you figure out what the actual load requirement's going to be, then you would, you would go ahead and do that.
Okay. So if I were to summarize, it's not your business model to do any EV charging, period?
At this time, yes.
At one point, you had a leasing thing that's, that's dead.
Correct.
Nobody else has picked it up. And so the ability to do it is there, just not.
Correct. It's not part of the current business plan.
Copy that. Thank you. Thank you.
I just, I just want to echo that. I also received the comment about the EV. I mean, it's a community that, so I'm glad that you're open to it and that the infrastructure, well, the, the ability to put one in is, as you said, you know, is a convenience store. You're only good if you're convenient. So that, that's perfect. So thank you for, for being open to that.
Sure.
Yeah, I, I had the same communication. Yeah, I, I, I get it. And it, and it is nice to know that should a provider want to put in EV charging, they'd be willing to be able to work with you, you know, and then they would have to set that all up. Want to thank the Planning Commission. I think they did a good job, asked a lot of good questions. Also want to thank you, Tim. It was, you know, very nice that you've been upfront all along. I remember being on the Planning Commission when this came forward and you're like, hey, I'm from Rutter's. And it's like, oh, okay. Normally, we get these land development plans and we don't know what it is. But I think by having that transparent openness, it's really engaged a lot of discussions and it's even got the community quite excited of the possibility of Rutter's. I, I remember seeing some things on social media and here and there, or now and then where somebody's like, when's that Rutter's going to open up? So definitely appreciate that. And, you know, thank you for working with the community and being, being here and attending. So.
Certainly. I mean, we are, we strive to be a part of the community, not just a business in the community.
Any other questions? If not, I say we entertain a motion.
Sorry, it is in there and I will get there.
I was buried in the bottom.
Yeah, I know.
Obviously, it's all the way at the bottom.
This will worry. I move. To approve the Rutter Store number 110 land development plan dated 17 January 2025 with conditions as described.
Do we have a second?
This is Patty, I'll second.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Patterson, second by Ms. Stevens. All the, any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no. Thank you. All right. I was gonna say, we're moving quite ahead. We had communications aboard. I think we addressed one of our communications. Did we have any other communications? Mr. Heller.
I had some related to the new trash receptacles and the new hauler, specifically around sharing customer information, one of them. And then also discussions, or at least folks reaching out about the Industrial and Commercial Development Authority here in Ferguson and wondering potentially when next meetings were going to be scheduled, et cetera. So, thank you.
I had, and I related to the Township Manager about the last day to pick up from waste management was on Monday and they missed a street in our neighborhood. And there was some issues because Bergmeier's doesn't do lawn waste, yard waste. And so some people, knowing that it was the last waste management pickup, had put out a lot of yard waste in the, and it did not get collected. But they've been in touch with Shelley Mato and I relayed that information to the manager. So hopefully we can get that resolved.
Any other communications?
Just about the garbage. And I was able to share the, COG did have a lot of good links and phone number readily available. So hopefully some of those issues got taken care of. I think we'll, issues like the long, the wrong sized container was delivered and so forth. So hopefully those things get worked out.
This might be our last short meeting. Couple things. I had, I had the pleasure of moderating at Town Hall over the weekend. And there's some really powerful stories, discussions, questions, answers, you know, non-answers. And as I was digesting that over the weekend, I was always, I was kind of going back to what can I bring to this body to, to help our residents or at least minimize the impact. And I think, first of all, we're staring down decreased earned income. That's a real possibility going forward is any day now, there could be some, you know, hey, we're closing a department or consolidating colleges into two. And so we don't need these three or four professors that didn't, you know, that, whatever the case, something's going to happen and it's a real possibility. And so, secondly, you know, we may need to make some hard decisions about level of service in 2026 and maybe even 2025, based on, you know, some of these externalities to, you know, and some of our core businesses in the, in the region. So, you know, just thinking about the potential for having an austere posture and in some respects and, and making sure we can pour into people in other ways is, is something that's kind of keeping me. Just adding to the concerns I have for kind of we, what we as a body need to do. So, you know, there's, there's been communications, again, in, in that vein. I'm trying to just summarize it all. But not a lot tactically right now, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna, there's going to be several things that come out in our next meetings from bringing up as board agenda items and, and then having action thereafter. So, my thoughts. Any communications?
Anyone else? I had, yeah, I had got a communication regarding recycling pickup that I forwarded over to Shelley Mato. And then there was another communication. I don't know, it may have been similar, but it was regarding the change in service and person just felt that they were getting less service and paying more. And I, I understand that, that was a tough discussion in Climate and Sustainability Committee of this new refuse contract. But I think as we looked, even though our prices were going up, some other places outside the region and across the state were going up way more than ours was. But also understanding, a lot of that's just operational costs. Like you, we, you gotta pay, pay the people more. The equipment's costing more. And e, even a lot of those other things like health insurance benefits and it, it's not, not as cheap, cheap anymore, unfortunately. And what we got was, again, the lowest price available to us. But also what, what the provider can also provide because they, they also do have their capabilities. So. Anything else?
One more communication. We've received a communication earlier today about are we the best township? The answer is yes. And that communication also said, well, this thing that I'm proposing is going to take 10 years. And so two weeks, four weeks, six weeks goes by and we, as we move on things in the grand scheme of 10 years, that's nothing. So I think we're very tactical in what we do. And I love it. Thank you, team.
Thank you. Uh, calendar items. I'm not seeing anything to point out. It looks like a lot of, well, there is the watershed cleanup day, April 12th. That, that's a big one, I believe. Who, who puts that together? I know there's a.
Clearwater.
Clearwater. So if anyone in the community wants to, you know, participate in a service project, you know, definitely check with Clearwater Conservancy. I'm sure they have ways that you can get. ways that you can get, get involved either by serving or even contributing to their efforts. And yeah, if not, I will recognize Ms. Stevens for item 10.
Chair, actually, I would just like to make a comment.
Yes.
Notice that on the calendar items, we don't have Arbor Day.
Is it the top?
Is it?
Yeah, under the...
Under...
Thank you.
Diversity initiatives. You want to speak on that? Or more information forthcoming?
More information on the website. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Stevens, item 10.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good evening, folks. Thank you.